Hello and welcome to the April 22nd, 2013 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 18th, 2013 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Shirley. Ms. Bogaczyanski? Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate, nope, sorry, whereas the Public Open Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude from the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: A, the matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association; and B, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. Okay, Deanna, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, we're now in executive session. We plan to return at 7:30.
I thought there were two items. Didn't we move to six because there were two items?
Okay, we're going to amend the resolution for going into executive sessions. So, in addition to the matters to be discussed of negotiations with the Hillsborough Education, we will also talk about professional services and, again, contract. Professional services contract. And, again, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're now again in executive session. Okay, we're back from executive session again. Welcome to the April 22nd, 2013 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Shirley. Ms. Bogaczyanski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have quorum. Okay. Let's stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the Board has received correspondence as shown in the attachment, and I'd like to hand it off to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few pieces of good news that I'd like to share with the Board and the community. First, congratulations to Kelly Janakowicz and David Pulsifer for being named Hillsborough High School Scholar-Athletes for 2012-2013. Sponsored by the Somerset County High School Principals' Association, this award recognizes students who have excelled both academically as well as athletically. Kelly and David will join representatives from all of Somerset County High School for an awards banquet in May. Many congratulations go out to Kelly and David. Let's give us a round of applause. Proud Papa. I see that. I'd like to remind parents that we are continuing to review revisions to our district calendar for the 2013-2014 school year. One of the revisions that I've shared before and I'd like to share again is that we have moved polling locations out of all of our elementary schools as well as ARIS. As a result of doing that, we anticipate being open for school the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday prior to teacher convention. We are continuing our negotiations with HEA, and during that time, once that concludes, we will have a final revised calendar. So, we want to wait until that process is over before we publish a new calendar, but that'll be coming shortly. I would like to remind the Board as well as all of our leadership team is that Wednesday is Administrative Assistance Day. I'd like to take this moment to thank all of the administrative assistants throughout our district for the fine work that they do. Across the district, we'll be having activities to recognize the importance of all of our administrative assistants. Also, I wanted to share that today I had the pleasure of being at Triangle School, and we had an activity called "Bubbles for Autism," where all of the children and staff throughout that building blew bubbles for a period, I think of three to five minutes. We're trying to actually set a record and recognize the great work that we do across the district for our autistic children. We also had an activity called "Drop Everything and Dance." That was a lot of fun, watching 500 kids and their teachers and the administrators who were there, and we had some very special guests who attended also. Members of our township committee were there as well. We were very happy to have them, as well as our Assemblyman Jack Ciccarelli and our Assemblywoman Donna Simon was also there, as well as our Township Administrator Anthony Farrar. So, we were very pleased that we had so many people come and celebrate Autism Awareness Month with us and enjoy the dancing and the bubble making. And with that, I'll turn it back over to our President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Schiff. Moving on to the approval of minutes, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the April 8th, 2013 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the April 8th, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
Salute.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or comments for that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to the public comment section of our meeting, and I'd like to open it up for new business, for the public. So, anyone has new business? Come on up to the podium.
Hello, we are the Representatives of Team 75. My name is Alina, and this is Jane, and at the last board meeting, we discussed that we were getting prepared for a regional at Lehigh University.
At Lehigh, our robot competed throughout qualification matches, and it was very successful. It was the only robot there that could climb to the third rung of the pyramid, and at the end of the competition, we are awarded the Innovation in Control Award.
Nice.
At the event, we also presented our chairman's engineering inspiration initiatives at this event, so although we didn't win, we would like to congratulate the teams that did for their work with their community, and our programs will still continue as planned, and we hope to expand all of these initiatives.
For example, this past Friday, we actually had another event for our Ys, or Women in Science and Engineering initiatives. We invited Girl Scouts from around our area, and we held a patch night where they go through interactive science experiments, and so we're looking forward to expanding these different initiatives as the year goes on.
And then, on a separate note, this past weekend, we also held a pasta dinner, which is our annual fundraiser to raise money for the team. Their turnout was great this year, and we had a lot more people show up, so we would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Congratulations on your successes and look forward to your progress. Okay, any other new business from the public? Okay, any new business from Board members? Mrs. Lay?
This coming Saturday at Woods Road School, they are having an electronics recycling event, and they're collecting some very, a lot of things, like TVs, computers, printers, keyboards, cell phones, PDAs, old VCRs, DVD players. These go to new tech, but in this case, Woods Road gets the money from your donations. It's collected by poundage, so I'm encouraging residents in Hillsborough, drop it off at Woods Road School this Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Lay. Any other new business from Board members? Okay.
I would just like to share something that I was remiss in not reporting out during my superintendent's report, but we had a Teacher for the Day program that was sponsored by our HEA, and I was very appreciative to be part of kind of the closing activity. This is an opportunity for members of our community to serve alongside one of our teachers for an entire day and kind of get that experience, and it was certainly eye-opening for those community members that had an opportunity to work alongside of our teachers. Special thanks goes out to all of the, all the parents and community members that participated. We also had three members of our Township Committee that also participated. Our Mayor Frank Delkor, our new Assemblyman, Mr. Greg Brichette, and Doug Thompson, I believe, the three of them participated, along with other, along with other people as well, and their names slipping, but I under, one of the other people was, was the daughter of our HEA president who participated as well. She did a wonderful job, too. So, it was a really wonderful day, and I didn't want to let that go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley?
Unfortunately, I wish I didn't have to say this, but I just would like to remind the public that we have a missing woman, Paige Aiello, and looking at the peach ribbon on my tree, as I'm sure other people have, is a reminder that she is still missing, and there is a tip line with her award, and if anybody has information, I know the family would greatly appreciate anyone giving anything at this point, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Haley. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family and friends. Now, I'd like to open up the podium to comments from the public regarding the action agenda. Okay, seeing none? Let's, okay, let's go to committee reports, please. Mr. Pulsifer with the Human Resources Committee.
The Human Resources Committee met last week. We began our meeting with a discussion of the job descriptions for the new technology positions as we had instituted in the 2013-2014 budget, and I believe there's action tonight on those. We followed that discussion with, we continued on job descriptions. There were a number of places where our senior administrators had responsibilities in their job descriptions which really didn't align with their position, as it were. So, there's some shuffling in job descriptions. For example, moving hospitalization, major medical, and other employee benefit plans out of the school administrator's office and into the Human Resources Assistant Superintendent's Office where it should have been. Emergency management was moved out of personnel and added to school business, which is more of an operational kind of thing, so that's where that belonged. And I believe a change for the affirmative action officer moved from personnel to curriculum and instruction. So, mostly the changes were there to align some of the tasks back to what the jobs, okay? Sorry, I'm being told I just said that backwards.
Strike that. Strike that, reverse it.
Yeah, do it the other way. We gotta work on our minutes about, I can't read them. So, yeah, affirmative action went to personnel. That does make more sense to align, again, these changes were really not significant in terms of removing any job functions. It was just putting those job functions with the people that they really should have been with. So, the committee supported those changes. We had a discussion on some salary proposals for non-aligned staff. Let's see, and then we also reviewed some policies for first readings, and, let's see, we also discussed a sick bank request for a member of the Association. We have, we discussed a situation where we have someone on a intermittent medical leave and the desire to have a long-term substitute in that position to make sure that there is continuity in the classroom, and so this is a little bit of an additional cost because that teacher will be in on some days, but we felt that the value of continuity in the classroom was much more important than the potential added cost. So, again, the Human Resources Committee does support that plan. And we finished with a discussion about the ongoing training and processes for the new teacher evaluation and administration evaluation model. Guy Whitlock gave us an update on where the training is and what some of the next steps are, and that is moving along. Still seems to be a lot more work to be done, but that's moving along well, and that was a Human Resources Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Who would like to go next? Mr. Gillette with the Operations Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. Operations Committee met twice because we had a lot of things to do, but I'm gonna try to make it brief. That was for your day, and I'm making it brief. On April 10th, we talked about the Triangle Road School Playground. This has been a project that's been going on for a couple of years. You'll see on the agenda tonight that we have to have an agreement, conservation and easement agreement with the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. They control uses in the watershed area, and playground is in that area, so there's a conservation and easement agreement with them. This is all par for the course, nothing interesting really, and finally, they should have their playground upgrade soon. Next, we talked about the bids for the, some projects at the high school. This is painting, some flooring, and a repair to the gym floor. These were all as expected, and these will all be projects that were done, will be done during the current year, or at least paid for out of the current year. Mr. Mahmoud, that's correct? Okay, so that was easy enough. Mrs. Martello, who's our purchasing assistant, came to our meeting, and she talked about our request for qualifications for professional services, not policy really, but our practices in that. Just to remind Board members, we have, we use quite a few professional services several years ago. We didn't want to have to reappoint professionals that were doing a great job, reappoint them every single year. We do reappoint them every year, but we didn't want to have to do a new RFQ every single year, so we came up with a program where we can, every year, we'll do a couple RFQs. So, this year, what's up for this year, which we'll be doing at our second May meeting, I believe, would be the risk broker, that's for our liability insurance, and also the attorney. Of course, every year, the Board reserves the right to ask for an RFQ for any of our professionals, and so we're gonna add one to the schedule this year. We're also going to put out an RFQ for Architects for the District for this year. So, those will come in, go out, and come back, and we're gonna have those on the agenda for the May meeting. Dr. Schiff also reported that he entered a memorandum of understanding with Hillsborough Township concerning emergency closing of the municipal building or board offices or schools, or, excuse me, stating that in the event of emergency closing of the township municipal building, board offices and our schools within the Board's control, schools within the Board's control can be used for the township, and vice versa. I guess we can use each other's facilities in emergencies. Also, Dr. Schiff talked a little bit about the Children at Play Program. This is an add-on to our half-day kindergarten program that parents pay for. He reported that enrollment is doing well, as expected. He suggested, we don't have the program at every elementary school now. He suggested that we go ahead and place it, or give the opportunity for students to enroll at every school, and then we'll see how enrollment goes, and if there is really no interest at all at certain school, we can cancel it at a later date. So, the committee was good with that. We also spent a considerable time talking about the transportation bids. We got, the transportation bids came in. We did realize our expected savings of over $900,000. We also had our attorney, Ms. Jane Mecca, on conference call for that meeting, and we also had Dawn Welchess, who was our transportation coordinator, the, sort of the assistant coordinator to Mrs. Espinoza, and she was also at the meeting. And we, we sort of, after the fact, wanted to reassure committee members and, by way of this report, the rest of the Board, that the upgraded bid specifications that we had in this year that we hadn't had in years past, and to remind the Board, those were the GPS systems on the buses, cameras, and an additional level of liability insurance. We wanted to make sure that those were consistent with other school districts in the area, what they were carrying, and the technology that they had onboard, which she informed us that she had prepared those bids, and she promised, assures that they were, and we're very satisfied to know that even with the additional requirements, we still realized the considerable savings. In fact, I think Ms. Welchess may have reported that it was around $1 million in savings for that, and that'll be on the agenda for tonight. Then, we met April 17th, and on April 17th, we had a very brief meeting. We talked about, Dr. Schiff talked about another contract with another provider. This was Aramark, and Aramark is in their, at June 30th, they'll be in their option year at the end of June 30th, and we discussed whether we should pick up the option, whether we should bid again, and am I reporting that tonight that we're, I report that tonight? Yeah, that we discussed this at committee, that we are going to put out RFP, RFQ?
RFP.
RFP, for provider for Aramark. Aramark provides the management for our custodial maintenance services and also the consumable supplies such as paper and custodial supplies that we use in cleaning our schools. So, we're not going to renew with the, with the option to renew. We're gonna put this out for bid again so that everyone can bid on it and see how we do with that. And the policies, we had several policies. They're all were attachments that you could have looked at if you wanted to, and they'll all be on for, I think, first reading tonight. There was nothing spectacular, interesting about any of the policies. They were all pretty much, as Dr. Schiff said, pro forma, I believe is the word he used in the meeting, if I recall. So, nothing really on that, and that's it. I'm all done.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mrs. Lay with the Education Committee.
We met on April 11th, and so I want to match up today's action agenda with some of the things that we discussed. Even though we spent a lot of time during the committee meeting, a few of the agenda items were pushed off to May's meeting because we spent a lot of time discussing the meeting with workload concerns with Mrs. Barbara Parker. So, for, to match up, in item A3 tonight, we're approving three textbooks, and I want to assure you that the Education Committee takes this job very seriously. Mrs. Swanson and Mrs. Haas and myself, we actually asked one textbook to be returned and then reevaluated, and we, I commend my fellow Board members because they took the time to review it, and I was so concerned about their reaction that I role-played it with my daughter and made sure that we were comfortable with the textbook, so thank you very much for that. And then, for agenda item A4, that's 13 proposed curriculum for the visual arts, and I actually feel so happy for students because there's a richness to our curriculum where, when students enjoy a particular area, let's say like painting, then they can go to the next level, advanced painting, or they have AP art studio. So, I think that our high school offers so many rich classes and allows students to continue their interest in an area and see if that's the right choices for them. These curriculum are from K through 12, and so we do propose to the full Board to accept all of this curriculum. Then, we also, as Dr. Schiff mentioned in his superintendent's message, we did go over the calendar again, and there are issues outstanding related to negotiations, and that's why, for the public to understand, that's why we can't approve of a final calendar, but there are some parameters that we do know about next year's calendar. In addition, we went over the school performance reports, which I think are on the website. They should be on the website, and I think it's like an inch and a half. It covers all the schools, and Dr. Antune has tried to give us a summary, and even the summary took a long time. So, the committee is sending it back. We are going to look at it one more time in the May meeting, and there are, there's a lot to parse out, but we do want to understand there are some changes. We used to follow this, this way of reporting out related to DFG, or how, it's how our schools are compared, and now we, there are different variables that allow us to compare to other schools, so we're adjusting to that, and I'll report in the May, in one of the May board meetings, what we discussed further in committee. And we also talked about college and career readiness, so that was a lot of discussion, but I want to focus now on the teacher workload concerns because we had a lot of good letters, very thorough, well-thought-out letters from teachers to the, to all Board members, and I wanted to report that in the Education Committee meeting, we had Mrs. Barbara Parker from the Hillsborough Education Association come and talk to us. And to summarize, we saw that there were four areas of concern that teachers had. So, they had, they needed a lot of time to complete online lesson plans. They are all transitioning to the new teacher evaluation model that the state has enforced on all schools. So, this is a stressor that, that all schools in New Jersey are going through, all teachers, and that there is, there, currently, the amount of time that's allotted for professional learning circles or PLCs is about 45 minutes, and it doesn't allow them enough time to really dive into it and make the most out of it. So, that's currently under discussion. And this is an interesting tidbit, that there isn't enough substitution coverage in our schools. So, if any parents want to help out, we need more substitutes, because when you don't have enough, then the teachers have to cover for those, those class periods. So, we know that, and the letters did convey to us that the teachers are concerned because they want to do the best job for the students. So, we have discussed this and understand that there are stressors, but some of these issues will need to be discussed during the negotiations process, so we, you know, we just wanted to make sure that that was understood. And then, lastly, that we did, we did discuss the random drug testing, and we wanted to, the Education Committee wanted to recommend to the full Board that there may be medical exemptions, exemptions for random drug testing to be considered under extenuating circumstances, and this would be considered on a case-by-case basis, and there would be a medical doctor's note to that effect. That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lay. Any questions? Discussion with regards to the committee reports? Okay, moving on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel-related expenses, overnight field trips, textbooks, and curriculum as indicated by, by Mrs. Lay's report from the Education Committee. Approve field trip destinations, out-of-district placements, and transfers of out-of-district. Also, ELL summer enrichment programs, and to approve the teacher's compensation for this.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A8 of the action agenda.
On behalf of the Education Committee, I recommend to the full Board to approve items A1 through A8.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion with regard?
Can we separate A2?
Yep. Yep. Any other discussion for items A1 or A3 through A8? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Atifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
I'm sorry, is this A2 or everything else?
No, this is A1 and A3 through A8.
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item A2 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Atifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Pulsofer?
abstained.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the heading of Human Resources. First, to accept the retirement of Donna Kitsey, special education teacher at Woodford, who has worked with us since November of 2000. We thank her for her service to our district. Resignations is listed, contract changes, group changes, leaves of absences, and appointments of long-term substitutes. Substitutes is listed, summer athletic camp stipends, summer enrichment program stipends, and contract changes to the 2013-2014 school year. Transfer change in assignments for the 2013-2014 school year, and first readings of two policies for inappropriate staff and teaching, staff conduct for teaching staff members, and inappropriate staff contact for support staff members. Also approving group changes, and approving the non-aligned administrators' employment agreements for next year, and renewal of unaffiliated personnel for next year. Approving the revised job descriptions for Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and School Business Administrator Board Secretary. And finally, to approve the policy revisions for first reading, policy 1320, duties of the Board Secretary, Business Administrator.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B15 of the Human Resources, of the action agenda.
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the board approve items B1 through B15, as listed in the Human Resources section.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Swanson.
I just had a question regarding the athletic camp stipends. I know that for many of those camps, the rec. department collects a fee, like the Future Lady Raiders Camp. Does, what happens with those fees? Do that get, does that get turned over to the, to the Board of Ed, and then that's used to pay those stipends?
These are our, these are, Ms. Swanson, these are our kids, our coaches. So it's an in-house program.
Right. Well, Future Lady Raiders Camp is for young kids.
Right.
I know my kids both participated, and I wrote a check to the township. Do those funds then get turned over to the Board of Ed?
I believe, Ms. Swanson, that's, I don't know, it's probably a separate organization. They don't get turned over. That's probably run through that program and not through the board. This is our program. It's in-house, it's different.
Yeah.
These are, these are for the high school-aged students?
No, the Future Lady Raiders Camp, which is listed with Coach Best and a few other coaches, is actually what it is exactly called by the township.
Oh, really?
And it's run, it's not high school-aged kids. It's not in preparation for the soccer program at the high school.
Is that one listed on the, I don't have the list in front of me.
It is.
I recall, looking at the list this afternoon, that on some of them, or at least, it made this statement at least one, in one spot on the list, that all of the fees, all of the stipends are paid from fees collected. I thought that statement was for everything on those sheets. I thought it was for the whole thing.
Well, I mean, I can understand if it was a summer program for the high school lacrosse team or something. We're not collecting fees from, from our students, right?
Just, we just got clarification from Mr. Eckert. The coaches actually raise the monies from those organizations. They provide it to the Board of Education. We deposit it in an account, and then we pay out what the coaches ask us to pay out in their budget.
Great.
So you were right when you said it's, the money does come to us via the coaches.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion for items B1 through B15? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Atifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the monthly financial reports, bills list, line item transfers, and award the bid for the gym floor repair and finishing and VCT installation tile at the high school. Award the bid for the classroom painting also at the high school. Award the transportation routes for next year. Award the conservation and maintenance agreement. Approve the conservation easement agreement. Approve the cooperative purchasing agreement with the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission. Approve the cooperative purchasing agreement of electrical services, also with MRESC. And approve revisions to the bylaws for first reading of nepotism and professional services. Approve the policies for first reading for internal controls, school district travel, purchase of schools of food supplies, and approve a new policy for first reading, advertising on school property. Approve the regulations adopted by the Board of Education for internal controls and school district travel.
C1 through C14. Thanks. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C14 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I didn't hear.
Judy Hough.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? Mrs. Ley.
I just appreciate that we had many bids on the painting and that, that we didn't get into that situation where there was only one bid, and, you know, I, that was, you know, I like that we did this the right way, and thank Operations Committee for that.
I just had a comment on C11.2, the first reading of the professional services bylaw. It states in there that if no bids meet the, the regulation that the board had discussed, that it would require board action, but it doesn't say exactly what action is required. And I just think it might do to be read again and actually put in what the action, especially given the questions about when a board votes, the number of, you know, what constitutes a forum, and is it a majority of the full board or a majority of the current members and that sort of thing, just, I'm just asking for clarification in that for the second reading.
Okay. We would probably make reference to the voting policy to make sure that aligns with there and in there.
That would be fine.
Okay.
But it's not in there currently.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not sure if it has to be, but we can look into it and have an answer for what it has to be.
That's all.
Like, before we do this, before we approve it at second reading.
Right.
I'd still recommend approving it first reading, and with, with the knowledge that we should find the answer for that before the second reading.
Exactly. Great.
The, on the nepotism policy in there, there was a revision of the state law. Previously, it stated that basically a relative of a board member or superintendent who's there before they come onboard cannot be prohibited from continuing to employ, they've added or promoted in the district. That's reflective of the new law, the revised law. And also, to talk also about the contracts and having multiple bids on the transportation bid, we had, originally, there were, how many? Seventy-one? There were like seventy-one routes.
Yes.
Got reduced down to sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
So it was a reduction of eight. For multiple routes, there were up to five, five bidders. It seemed like that the triple tier had the most, the double tier less so, and then there were three single, which were, were less so as well. But with that, we had multiple, multiple people bidding, and we're saving the district a million dollars.
I wanted to maybe make a comment, ask a question on that also, so Mr. Mahmood, get ready. So awarding of the bids tonight with the resolution is actually, the, actually, the bids, the process is contingent upon actual contracts with each of the companies. So I, remind me, Mr. Mahmood, how, what, what period is a contract typically for? Is there something, is it a multi-year with renewals and other things in your experience? What's, what does the contract normally look like after we award this?
The, there is an option to renew, Mr. Gillette. I think the contract will be drafted with these price lines, and then the option for the board to renew. We've been renewing contracts with, with our various vendors for many, many years, so I think the statute allows us to renew the contract with a negotiated CPI increase, but the contract will be developed with these price points, and then the option to renew moving forward.
At infinitum until we, unless we?
Unless we want to change.
It's our option to bid again.
Correct.
Okay.
As we're doing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion with regard to items C1 through 14?
Let me just, I want to, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Mr. Kent. I hear a little, little birdie over here. So, Mr. Mahmood, the, the contract is a one-year, is one-year contract, and there'll be some, some percentage in there, some standard that these contracts of this type typically use, a percentage that you can renew, that percentage may be tied to CPI.
It is a CPI.
Or something like that.
It is a CPI.
So one and something percent, or whatever it is currently. And we typically would have the option of renewing that every year at that is price or?
Rebidding.
Rebidding, because of, we had a great idea, like we had this year, for, you know, different, different way of doing it, or some other reason. Okay, thank you.
It's just, so that's for transportation, and I remember we, we approved garbage for a two-year term, and I remember asking, what if they didn't do a good job? So why do we?
The statute, it just separates transportation bids with CPI than any other cost of services.
It's basically the state statute.
Don't try to make sense of New Jersey.
It's still New Jersey after all, everybody.
That's right.
No matter how hard we try.
All right. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Atifonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Ley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Moving on to old business. First, any old business from the public. Sir? Yep, please come to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Steve Ostergren, 34 Milburn Drive. It's not, not old business. I would just ask the board to consider a suggestion.
Okay.
Over by Amsterdam School. I have a son that plays on the wall. I'm told that the Board of Education is in charge of that tennis court and that wall, tennis lacrosse wall, which is continually, got holes in it, or graffiti, or vandalized. And so my suggestion is, would the board consider putting a light over there? I also have a teenage daughter, and I know in the summer, there's a lot of kids congregate up there, and the teenagers hate light. Anything that's got, got light and lit up, they will avoid. So it may be pushing the problem somewhere different, but I know there is, I mean, right now, it's all vandalized and graffiti on one side, so maybe the, the, the small cost to install that initially might be offset by the not having to repair it and paint it and fix it all the time down the road. That's all.
Okay, great. Thank you for your suggestion.
I pass it every day.
Okay. Any old business from board members? Mrs. Haley.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask Mr. Mahmood. I noticed this weekend that the sign at the high school is missing, and I'm only assuming it's because we finally have construction happening, so can you give us an update, sir?
To be totally honest, I do not have an update tonight, but certainly I will look into it tomorrow and find out. The last update I gave you was the last information I had, and I will speak to Mrs. Biggar and Mr. Fresco and find out what the status is.
I have been eagerly awaiting this.
I did see the crane.
Yes.
All right. I think we're on our last item of the agenda, which is, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Got Mrs. Ley, second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ramad.